I call this meeting of the Cartersville City Council to order. We will begin with our invocation and pledge. Please rise.
Ed, it's great. Governor Carter, once again we're here for the task of promoting our beautiful little city of Cartersville. Actually, we're in the right direction. I've, uh, when the city attendance is growing, I want to thank you for the rain. Hopefully, there was no injuries from the storm. Bless the sick, the homeless, the troops at war, and if we can ever get it straightened out, please bring them home as soon as possible. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Please join us in the pledge. Pledge of the United States of America and to a republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Keating, the rule, please.
Kerry Hodge, Ward 1.
Here.
Jay Step, Ward 2.
Here.
Louis Tonsmyer, Ward 3.
Here.
Lindsay McDaniel, Ward 4.
Here.
Diane Tate, Ward 5.
Here.
Lori Prin, Ward 6.
Here.
Thank you, Connie. Our first order of business is the approval of the council meeting minutes from our July 7th meeting. Council's had these for a few days or so. Plenty of time to look over those and identify any additions, corrections, or edits. If there are them, please make them. If not, Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And the minutes are approved. We have got, uh, Tom Quist has a couple of items to bring before us tonight. Tom, what do you got?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you. Uh, the first item I have is a request to extend the grant period for the CDBG Disaster Recovery Grant, which we received in November of 2009. Uh, the scheduled grant period was two years. Uh, unfortunately, we got off to a rather slow start due to the program being new to us, and it was also new to DCA. So, uh, there were a lot of hurdles for us to cross. Uh, we were successful in crossing them ultimately, and now we're well on our way, and we're making really good progress on the project. In fact, we just completed our first Habitat build, and, uh, it went very well. Uh, we've maintained excellent communication with, uh, the Department of Community Affairs throughout. I believe that they are happy with our progress at this point, and, uh, throughout the process, we've had sort of an informal understanding that, uh, should we need more time, that we, we could definitely request it, and as long as it were demonstrating progress, they would be open to that idea. So, uh, we feel very confident that we will receive an extension. We're asking for an additional year that will give us until November of 2012. Um, our current plan is, uh, we've got one Habitat House complete already this year. We're hoping to finish two more Habitat Houses before the end of the year. We're also hoping to finish the, uh, affordable rental property that we're building as part of this grant, and, uh, we'll finish the remaining three Habitat Houses next year before the fall, uh, should this, uh, extension be approved. So, I'm asking for your, um, approval of this request of DCA to extend our grant period for one year.
I have a question I didn't think about in the work session. The, how is the affordable rental unit being built? Is Habitat building that, or that? I know it's through the EDAW.
That's through the EDAW Housing Authority, and they're actually-
Are they building that?
Uh, they're, yeah, they're gonna bid that out separately.
Okay, so that's not gonna be a volunteer effort-
Yeah, yeah, it will not be a volunteer project. So, the good thing is, they already have a piece of land that they own that they're planning to build on, so we'll save money on acquisition.
Great, thank you. Okay. Any other questions or discussion?
Let me ask this question. Uh, on these Habitat Houses, uh, do you have a waiting list of prospective, uh, individuals that, that will occupy these houses?
I'm not actually familiar with the list. Um, I, I know that, um, you know, we've got two houses planned this year. We're, um, in fact, in just a moment, I'm gonna be, uh, talking to you about two properties that we'd like to, uh, begin working on. Um, and there are currently owners slated to go into those two homes that have yet to be built. Um, I could direct you to Robin Hooker. She's the Director of Habitat for Humanity, if, if you're thinking about someone in particular who might be interested.
There are a lot of places that need to be torn down, but you know-
Let me, let me interject, 'cause I know that the Habitat, uh, folks, there's, they typically have an application process.
Right.
And I think when we started this, back at the beginning, one of the, one of the things that they did is they had an application day where everybody came in and applied, and they, there were about, I wanna say there were about 200 applicants, and from that, it was culled down to, to the top, five or six.
I remember when we, we went to the ribbon cutting at the house, they were talking about that process, and the lady had applied and actually been selected, so it's fairly open process.
And actually, I-
But Habitat does that, I mean, if there was somebody that were needing a Habitat House, they could, they could approach them and do an application and see if, if and when and where they could get on that list for housing.
Okay.
Now, as far as the affordable rental piece, then they need to go through the Housing Authority, and I don't know if they've already identified-
Yeah, and I'm not exactly sure how that process is gonna work. We're really kinda leaving it up to them. As long as they meet the, uh, requirements of the grant, we're not trying to manage that process at all.
Thank goodness they're managing it, and we're not having to.
We'll leave the experts in charge of that.
Thanks. All right, you have a question?
I do. Tom, you and I talked, and I went to look at the house that has already been built. It looks really nice. My question to you is, with the additional homes, this is all in the North Town area-
Correct.
And we've been focusing on that to try to do incentives to make, uh, that area even better and better, and, in, in your opinion, will be doing homes that will be incentives to this area? Is that-
Yes. Um, you know, we have stressed all along that we want these properties to be made with high-quality materials. We want them to fit in with the character of the neighborhood. Um, you know, and we're doing our best. Uh, where possible, we're trying to get rid of stuff that needs to be gotten rid of. Uh, for instance, the house that, that we replaced at 118 was, uh, extremely dilapidated.
It's the house with the blue tarp, that's what we described.
Yeah, it was in awful shape. So, I mean, really, anything would've been improvement, but I, you know, I'm personally very proud of, of the product that they delivered. Uh, I, I didn't have anything to do with it, but, um, but I think they did a great job. They're using really high-quality materials. They're also, um, affordable homes to live in. They're, they really focus on energy efficiency, so, uh, hopefully that'll allow more funds, uh, for the homeowner to hang on to, to make, you know, additional improvements, landscaping and things like that. So, we really have stressed the importance of, um, putting high-quality homes in there. We're, we're really not trying to do anything that's gonna take away from the neighborhood. We really hope we're improving it, so.
And I have had some, some emails from some other residents within the area, and they're very placed, good, very placed.
Good.
Well, I'll disagree with you from the statement that you made, that you had nothing to do with it. I won't get into it now, but I know you've put an awful lot of time into it, so you did have a lot to do with all this happening.
Well, I'm talking about building the actual house.
I know you didn't swing a hammer per se, but, uh-
But you could have.
You could have. Any other discussion, questions? If not, Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the, uh, request of extension of a grant period.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And the motion is passed unanimously. Continue on, Tom.
Okay. On a related note, um, I guess a little over a month ago, the city purchased, uh, two additional properties for this project. Those, those properties were purchased using grant funds, uh, for which we've already been reimbursed. Uh, when we purchased those properties, the, uh, the plan was to purchase them, demolish the structures on them, that was also a reimbursable expense, and then transfer these properties to Habitat, uh, for their ownership, so that they can then build on them and then, uh, sell the, the homes, uh, according to their process. So, we're now at that point. We did acquire them. We've, uh, we've demolished the structures, got rid of two, um, blighted structures within our community in the North Town area, and, uh, we're ready to turn over ownership to Habitat, um, and, at, at the same time, we're issuing them a loan, uh, to, a construction loan to actually build these homes. And this is all coming out of the grant funds. It's all reimbursable expenses. So, I'm asking for your, uh, approval to allow the Mayor and City Clerk to execute the documents associated with transferring those properties and issuing the construction loan to Habitat.
Any other discussion? Need to be hit on that item. If not, Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Tom.
Thanks.
Uh, next item is an intergovernmental agreement with Barto County, Mr. Lovell.
Um, Mr. Mayor, uh, once again, uh, it's time for the city, all the cities in Barto County and the county to enter into a agreement and bring before the voters a, uh, opportunity to, um, have a new sploß for, uh, infrastructure improvements. Uh, attached as part of the agenda tonight is a resolution and intergovernmental agreement form that will do that. I will recommend that if y'all do wish to approve that, that you approve it, uh, subject to the Mayor and City Manager approval of the final form of the agreement, as there are still some minor changes that will need to be made to it. In short, um, it is anticipated that the revenues will be $220 million from this sploß. Uh, 27 million of that is for the, um, landfill and, um, antenna radio system for public safety, which will be shared by the county and all the cities, and then the remainder of the, um, 193 million anticipated will be shared by the cities and counties based upon their population percentages. The city of Cartersville's percentage is roughly a little over 19%, and that equates to around $37 million that will be used for various, um, projects that are indicated on the list for roads, infrastructure, public safety facilities, and recreation facility. One additional item that is currently not on the list, I was requested to ask if y'all would add, would be if there is extra funds left over from the transportation projects to include money in there for railroad crossing improvements. Uh, and that's it in a nutshell. There will also be, um, jointly shared by the city and county, a item on the sploß which will be used to acquire and pay off the, um, debt on the joint development authority part related to both, um, infrastructure of gas, water, and sewer, and also the land to assist in that being marketed. The city and the county are to be fully reimbursed for any and all expenses related to that as the property is sold off in the future. It's my understanding, staff recommends it for y'all's approval.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Just a quick question. Is the population percentages, are they, it seems to say the 2000 census? Is that not the 2010 census?
They are based on the 2010 census.
The latest numbers were based on 2010, and the, the law for sploß is a little bit different than laws. Splot, you can use a number of different things, but sploß, as, as David had reviewed it, is, uh, based on population, and also, uh, if, if they preferred to, the county could take the whole thing and stick it in countywide projects, they wouldn't share any of it with us.
I just noticed some of the, uh, paperwork itself did say the 2000 census, so that's why I asked.
Did you get a copy of the attachments? Did you-
Yeah, I handed those to, for me. Yeah, that, that is the form of the draft that was sent out by the county. There are some changes that will be made to that. That's why we're asking y'all to approve the form of the document tonight, subject to final approval by the Mayor and City Manager.
And more, we've, we've been meeting with, uh, Sam and I have been meeting with the county and with the mayor's, and staff from others, the other cities, probably for, perhaps a month, pretty much since the beginning of the year. And so, when we first started talking about this, the new sploß, the new, uh, the new census numbers had not even been out, so, uh, that, that may be some explanation why that's on there. The other explanation's just there, but, uh, as Keith said-
There's a bit of a change in the population numbers, too. We were talking about it earlier. Fadaresville has become second, and, uh, has actually surpassed you hardly.
Oh, really? So, we'll have the best numbers we could possibly have as far as getting the city's percentage to shift.
Uh, we actually lose a piece because the county's grown, uh, more, and, and, you know, it's, hopefully, the whole pie grows enough that everybody will get a good, good chunk of it.
Same. Okay. Any other discussion? If not, Chair will entertain a motion. Just for clarification, Mr. Lovell, if that last provision about the railroad crossings, does that need to be a part of this motion?
Does need to be part of the motion.
Okay.
Mayor, I'll make the motion then. I make a motion that we accept, um, let me turn back to the original page and get the, the intergovernmental agreement with Barto County for the 2014 sploß with the addition of the transportation, uh, as mentioned by Mr. Lovell tonight.
That's with the understanding that's paid for after everything else?
Yes, sir. I think it was number 11 on the list, transportation.
Subject to final approval. Subject to the Mayor and City Man- Manager's approval to file for.
Thank you, yeah, because the census number was different.
The document, so.
So, we've loaded all that into one motion? You got that?
We're good, county. (laughing).
I wanna make, I wanna make sure that you've got that.
Oh, yes.
And Connie's got that.
I wanted to make sure that Connie, you're looking at me.
I wanna make sure that you accepted her amendment to your motion, which technically takes a second, but we're not gonna do that.
Right, exactly. That's what I was trying to whisper.
We don't care what Robin says.
So, we've got a motion and an accepted amended motion from the person who made the motion.
Yes, I accept.
Would anybody like to second that, or would you like this?
I'll second that.
Here, turn it to Sam.
I'm gonna let Lori, I'm gonna let Lori second that, since she's got, I feel like a game show host.[957.01][957.01](laughing). All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Lori.
Thank you. All right. Uh, the next item on the agenda is, uh, going to be set aside. We're gonna take no action on that one this evening. So, we'll move to the next item, which is, uh, Mr. Portis.
Yes, Mayor. Uh, bringing for you the renewal for our workers' compensation insurance. We are currently fully self-insured, up to a certain level. The renewal numbers come in, uh, this year, and I recommend going with, uh, mutual, or I'm sorry, Midwest Employers. Our self-insurance retention will be $400,000 for most departments and $500,000 for a couple of departments that are, they consider higher risk. Uh, the current premium for that is $41,171. USIS, uh, currently does the TPA, or third-party administration of these, any claims that we have, and their actual premium, um, is $9,900. It wasn't your agenda memo at $11,000, but it's since come down to $9,900. Uh, I recommend approval of this, just, uh, as I've said in the, in work session, we've been on, uh, self-insured since about 2007. If we were fully self-in, fully insured, meaning the first dollar claims were paid by the reinsurance company, our premium would be in the $600,000 range. Uh, the highest year we've had in total claims, including all costs, was 2008, 2009. It was $230,000, $244,000, so we've saved every year by going under the self-insurance plan. Just recommend approval of the renewal with Midwest and with, uh, USIS for the services.
Okay. Any discussion or questions for Dan on this item?
And just the maximum number is what, again?
When you say the maximum number, which-
Premium and claims.
The premium and claims that we've paid is $230,000, $244,000. Now, that's, that was the highest-
Now, like, if we was to have a really bad year, what's our maximum?
Our highest year under this insurance is a million dollars. We're subject to up to a million dollars on that specific loss. And we have about $700,000 in the bank under workers' compensation insurance for retention, plus this year's budgeted amount is about $280,000.
Okay.
So, this year's budgeted amount will add an additional $280,000 to that?
It'll be used to, to that, plus also pay for the, the reinsurance premium of $41,000 and the $9,900 that'll go out of that, and any claims dollars we have.
Dan, for clarif, um, to make sure that I understand, for clarification, uh, we're saving about $400,000 a year by self-insuring.
Typically, it's around that much.
Typically.
You know, it's, it's just gonna, it depends on how good of year we've had. The highest individual, largest claim we've had is $42,000, the highest individual claim. Um, I said that, that one year that we had, 2008, 2009, that we paid $230,000 in insurance premium and claims and all, had that highest claim of $42,000, but, like I said before, our departments have done a tremendous job of promoting safety to our employees, and this is, uh, one of the reasons we're able to save dollars, is because of the, that promotion of safety, it keeps our claims dollars down.
I haven't heard of Midwest Employers. Is it well-rated?
Yes, they're, it's a A-plus rated carrier. They, essentially, there's only two or three out there, and the one we were with, Safety National and Midwest, that kinda changed. I've looked at, uh, every year at the premiums they have, and, um, this year, that they had a better rate than, than, uh, Safety National.
Okay. There's no other discussion. Chair will entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Elliott, your item, please, sir.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, we have several streets in our city where we have some significant pavement failures. Uh, Dothet Ferry, Industrial Park Road, Old Mill Road, Henderson Drive and Terrell Drive, or, I think there's two or three others that are on them that I haven't mentioned. But, um, we advertised for bids from contractors to come in and mill these areas out and, and bring the new asphalt back to the, to the surface to repair. We've got five bids. Butch Thompson Enterprises bid $88,917.22. Blunt Construction bid $91,977.50. CW Matthews bid $96,699.27. Northwest Georgia Paving bid $102,947 even, and Baldwin Paving bid $110,479.52. We'd like to recommend the low bidder, Butch Thompson Enterprises, for $88,917.22. Um, this is a budgeted item. E-Verify and Save documentations are in order.
Okay.
Just one simple question.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, you know, that's, that's obvious to me. Is Barto Paving, were, they just didn't turn in a bid? Is that right? I mean, they just-
We solicited the two local bidders we have, Barto Paving and Gunn Paving and Construction. They did not bid. In fact, we tried them first before we even advertised it.
Gotcha. They're burning gas.
Is this a, is this a specialized type of project, where they may not have the, man, I don't want you to speak for them, but I mean, is, is this something that typically any type of paving company would do, or is this kinda specialized?
Any type paving company has access to this equipment. They may not own it, but they have access to it.
Okay.
You've seen the huge milling machine that they use, that they grind the, that's what it, you have to, you grind all this out, the bad areas out, and come back and, and rework it.
Okay. All right. Counsel?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bobby. Ed, you've got the next item, sir.
Mayor, Council, the Cartersville Water Department currently has a sploß-funded water main project under design, and this project is to connect the high-pressure water system we have on Center Road with the high-pressure system we have on Main Street. To give you a little bit of background about this, the Center Road, uh, line has a pump station and tank. Main Street has a pump station. By connecting these two, we'll be able to shut down one of the pump stations, so we should see some, uh, lower operating costs. The project involves installation of 7,000 feet of 16-inch diameter ductile iron pipe. The foundries have announced that there's gonna be a 10% increase in pipe prices in the next 30 days, and, uh, we're requesting approval to pre-purchase this pipe that'll allow us to save approximately 10%. It'll also allow us to avoid paying sales tax versus having the contractor purchase the pipe. We received price quotes from four different vendors. Kendall Municipal Supply submitted the low bid in the amount of $270,830. This'll work out to about a little over $40,000 in savings by avoiding the 10% increase in sales tax. We recommend approval of this purchase from Kendall Municipal Supply in the amount of $270,830 that will be paid for from sploß funds, and we do have the proper E-Verify and Save documentation in hand.
Okay. Any questions or discussion?
When do you, uh, anticipate bidding the actual work for this?
I talked with the engineers today. They're, they're working on finishing up the design. On, as far as, though, ordering the pipe, we'll need to do that. They, they've been holding this price for us, so we would need to do that, I think, tomorrow.
As far as the actual job, I just wondered about when, when we might see-
I'm hoping we can, uh, get this thing, one of the issues, we're waiting on an easement, but I'm hoping the design will be complete within 60 days. We'll press on it. Then, then we'll probably go through a pre-qualification stage, and then the bidding process, uh, but before the year's out.
And there is some that this pipe price increase will hold throughout the year?
Well, no, we actually need to make the, the purchase here at hand.
So, you need, you wanna get the pipe before you do all the rest of your-
Right, right.
Okay. Ready, good?
I'm gonna ask the, the city question. Where do, where do you keep that pipe? Or do you, they keep it, and then they bring it to you when you need it?
We can either store it on our yard. We have a storage yard, and, uh, that would be one thing. We may check with the pipe, uh, supplier to see if they would store it, and then that way the delivery can be coordinated with, uh, the contractor.
Just asking. I don't know.
So, you got a question?
Yeah. I'm just, I'm sure there's not many people that are stealing pipe.
No, not, not ductile iron.
Not ductile iron.
It was copper pipe, maybe.
It was copper pipe, they would.
All right. Chair will entertain a motion or further discussion.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ed. Now, it's time for the monthly financial statement. Mr. Reinhart.
Honorable Mayor and Council are here to talk about the financial report from May of 2011.
What did it?
In the general fund, revenues decreased over the May 2010 by $105,000. Expenses have increased by $1.974 million. This is due mainly to a couple of, of increased personnel expenses, operating expenses, and capital expenses. If you remember, we purchased a couple of fire trucks in December, and we had to reclassify those items to the expense side, and we also purchased some land in February of 2011. Three areas of revenue that I look at monthly are local option sales tax. We've had an increase over last year's, uh, level of $134,000. Police fines and forfeiture's increase of, uh, $97,000. Billing permits and inspections had a decrease of nearly $14,000. The water and sewer fund, revenues decreased over May 2010 by $654,000. This is due largely to the lower, uh, capacity fees, coupled with the lower water sales and decreased fines and surcharges. Uh, expenses increased by $226,000. This is attributable mostly to the increased cost of repairs for the water treatment plant. And the gas fund, revenues have decreased from May 2010 by $2.1 million. This is due to less gas consumption. Expenses have in, decreased by $143,000, due mainly to a decrease in personnel costs, operating costs, and the cost of purchased gas. In the electric fund, revenues have increased from last year by $303,000, while expenses have also increased by $1.8 million, due largely to the cost of purchased electricity, uh, along with increased capital expenses. Storewater fund, revenues decreased from last year's level by $18,000. Expenses have increased by $471,000, due to increases in operating expenses and capital expenses. In the solid waste fund, revenues decreased from last year's level by $21,000, and expenses have increased by $52,000 due to the increase in personal expenses. And lastly, in the fiber fund, revenues have increased by, uh, $68,000 from last year's levels, while expenses have increased by $44,000, and this is due mainly to the increased and this is due mainly to the increased operating expenses coupled with lower statewide telecom payments. That is my report.
I got a question.
Yes.
I noticed that police fines and forfeitures were up ninety-six thousand, or roughly a hundred thousand dollars. Does that mean we have something big happen this May, or?
My understanding is it's better collection, more people are paying-
Everybody's guilty.
Well, essentially, yes. And those, and those, and those people who are, who are guilty are, are paying, and there are, there are a lot more emphasis on trying to, to collect those outstanding debts.
And the bigger thing is, more people have been able to pay this year, whereas last year, many more people requested to go on community service due to the fact they didn't have the funds available to pay their fines.
That's an option.
It is an option. Not for you, but it is an option.
All right. I was just wondering, I, this is, it's a big number.
It is. Any other questions on the financial report?
Thank you.
And we will conclude with another presentation by Tom Quist. This is the second part of the citizen survey results. Once again, I shudder because Richard Osborne's not here to run the PowerPoint, but we'll plod along.
Thankfully, I've got a remote. As you said, this is the second in our series of presentations on the results from the citizen survey. Just to remind you, as we go through these slides, any change that you see that is plus or minus eight percentage points is considered a statistically significant change. So you might see some smaller trends, but, you know, don't read too much into it unless it's fairly substantial, because it could just be, you know, within the margin of error. So today's presentation is going to focus on a little bit about shopping, housing, health and wellness, education, and transportation. When we asked folks about the shopping opportunities, how they viewed those in Cartersville, we, fifty-nine percent of the population, excuse me, of the survey respondents responded that it was excellent or good. That's above average when compared nationally and similar to the norm when compared to the southeast. The trend's fairly stable, a little bit of uptick there, but it's not a significant change. The overall quality of business establishments in Cartersville is fairly steady at sixty-six percent, rating it as excellent or good. That's similar to both the national and southeastern norm. Retail growth seen as too low. We've seen a pretty marked increase in the number of people that felt that it was seen as too slow. We're up to forty-three percent of our respondents believing that retail growth is seen as too slow. This is above the national norm and much above the southeastern norm, so that's a slide of note right there. We get into housing. The availability of affordable housing is a strong suit in our community. Fifty-seven percent of the survey respondents believe that the availability was excellent or good. That's both much above the national and the southeastern norm, so that's a really good sign for affordable housing in our, our community. In terms of the variety of housing options, we also felt good about that, with sixty-six percent rating it excellent or good. That's above both the national and southeastern norms as well. When they asked how many, the percent of folks experiencing housing cost stress, which is where housing costs thirty percent or more of your income, only twenty-nine percent reported experiencing that stress. That's thankfully much below both the national and southeastern trends. So overall, it, it looks like housing is a, an area of strength for the city of Cartersville. When asked about the availability of affordable quality healthcare, fifty-six percent responded that it was excellent or good. That is above the national and southeastern norm. When asked about availability of preventative health services, sixty percent rated it excellent or good. That's above the southeast and similar to the national norm. And overall health services, sixty-nine percent rated it excellent or good. That's above both the national and southeastern norm. So also, it looks like health services is a strength for our community as well. When asked about the availability of affordable quality food, we rate, rated similar to everybody else around the country, including the southeast. Sixty-four percent feel that, that we have excellent or good availability of affordable quality food. Affordable quality childcare, fifty-six percent rated that excellent or good. That's also much above the national and southeastern trend. That's a good sign. Okay, we're gonna get into a little bit about people's economic outlooks here. Cartersville's a place to wo- work. Sixty-two percent of the respondents rated it as excellent or good. That's similar to the national norm and above the norm in the southeast. In terms of employment opportunities, only thirty-two percent of the respondents rated employment opportunities as excellent or good. However, while that is, does seem kind of low, it's in line with the national and southeastern This one, unfortunately, jobs growth, or job, job growth is seen as too slow by ninety-two percent of the respondents in our survey. Unfortunately, that is much above both the national and the southeastern norm. So in some areas, they are optimistic about the economy, but they do feel that job growth is indeed too slow. However, oddly, I would say, maybe, the, when asked about the likelihood that the economy would have a positive impact on their household income in the next six months, twenty-eight percent said that they were very or somewhat positive about the impact of the economy. That's actually much above both the national and the southeastern trend. We asked them to rate economic development, and fifty-three percent of them felt that it was excellent or good. That is above both the national and southeastern norm. Okay, into education. Public schools is another strength in this area. I think most folks who live around here have probably heard that kind of through the grapevine or just from, from people in the community, and that is indeed what was indicated in the survey. Seventy-eight percent of the people rated the public schools as excellent or good, and that's actually right there on the border of a significant increase from two thousand and nine, and seventy-eight percent is good enough for much above both the national and the southeastern trend. So that supports our, our view that our school system is indeed excellent. In terms of overall educational opportunities, sixty-four percent rated that as excellent or good, and that is in line with the national and the southeastern trend. Okay, now we're getting into transportation. This slide's just a little bit different. This particular slide breaks down how people get to work throughout the week. I'm not gonna go through, well, quickly go through each one, but basically, the main takeaway from this slide is that there has actually been an increase, a statistically significant increase in the number of people who report driving a car by themselves. We also saw a decrease in the number of people who reported carpooling, either with other children or adults. There was a decrease in the use of public transportation, decrease in the number of people who walked, biked, those who worked at home, and then other as well, which I'm not sure what other is, maybe flying to work or jetpack perhaps.
Roller coasters.
Roller coasters is another option, who knows? So again, the average percent of work commute trips made by driving alone has gone up from seventy-four percent in two thousand and nine to eighty-four percent in two thousand and eleven, and that percentage is much above both the national and the southeastern trend. So it looks like we've got a lot more people who are driving by themselves than, than Unfortunately, the ease of car travel, probably having something to do with that at least, forty-six percent rated it as excellent or good. That is much below the national norm and below the southeastern norm. Traffic flow on major streets, thirty-one percent rated it as excellent or good. That is much below the national norm and below the southeastern norm. Traffic signal timing, thirty-nine percent rated it as excellent or good. That's much below both the national and the southeastern trend, norms. Street repair, forty-eight percent responded that it was excellent or good. That's in line, similar to both the national and southeastern trend. Street cleaning, I know it's a service that Bobby takes pride in offering, that rated sixty-nine percent, believed that it was excellent or good, and that's above the national and southeastern norms. Street lighting, sixty-eight percent felt that it was excellent or good. That's much above both the national and southeastern norms. Snow removal, this is the first year we asked it. Normally, we don't get a lot of snow, but every once in a while, we do, and we feel good about what we did this past year. And fifty-eight percent felt that it was excellent or good. That's similar to the national and southeastern trend, and I assume we're competing against northern states on that, so. Public parking, forty-six percent felt it was excellent or good. That's in line with the national and southeastern averages. Bus travel, twenty-seven percent only rated it as excellent or good. That's much below national and southeastern. Ease of bicycle travel in Cartersville, thirty-two percent rated it as excellent or good. That's much below the national norm and below the southeastern norm. Ease of walking in Cartersville, fifty-six percent rated it excellent or good. That is similar to both the national and southeastern norms. Availability of paths and walking trails, I know that this is something that we focused on a lot recently. Fifty-nine percent of the respondents rated them as excellent or good. That's similar to the national norm and actually much above the southeastern norm. So compared to those around us, we're doing pretty well with walking trails. Sidewalk maintenance, another area Bobby takes pride in, I'm sure. Fifty-eight percent excellent or good. That's above both the national and southeastern norm. And that is all I've got for you tonight.
That's all?
Yeah, I'm sorry, that's it. I didn't want to do a hundred and some slides, but I do have more information about the jetpacks, if you're interested.
We are, actually. Y'all can get together after the meeting to discuss jetpacks. Thank you, Tom. Any other business that needs to come before council this evening?
May I ask a question? Where do we do this information?
Where what?
What do we do with this information?
What do we do with it? We compare ourselves to other communities, we communicate it to the public, we track trends where we've made some real progress. The one that, and I think that there was a significant enough change in there to track it, that it would have, it probably would have been award-winning under the people that we do this with, but they didn't see it that way. But a real example, and a subject near and dear to your heart, you can see how, before we made improvements to the library, it was viewed as substandard, but after we did that, they came up. You can actually, you can actually look at it and track what you do, and if this does nothing else, it gives you scientific information that's statistically backed, that will indicate to you what people think as opposed to, well, five people called me about this and complained. That, that's, that's a good barometer, I think, for immediate information, but if you're looking at long-term trends and if you want to set policy, this is the way to do it.
It seems to me that from the last two reports, two things have stood out. One is that the quality of air is unacceptable.
Oh, it is historically bad. The quality of air is historically bad, the signal time is historically bad, and cable TV is too.
And the lack of bus service.
Well, I'll tell you from the transportation department, because I saw some of the raw data early on and talked about, actually asked Sam about some of the, the signal timing and some of the ease of transportation, which, you know, when you think about it, we're fortunate that we have so many state highways running through our town. You know, main streets are state highway, Tennessee streets are state highway, Castle Roads are state highway. All these roads are, the, the signalization on all those roads is, is not controlled by the city of Cartersville. And, you know, how do you, DOT does the best they can do, but, you know, when, I guess our choice would be, the question that I asked was, well, gee, is there any way to get into some kind of agreement to maybe where we control the signalization to help that? But you start getting into the cost of maintaining those traffic signals, David, I think you were involved in that conversation as well. It's certainly not an endeavor that's gonna make a lot of financial sense to the city to do.
And probably one of the biggest things you do in terms of use of this are policy questions. Sunday alcohol, Clarence Brown Conference Center, we didn't ask those particularly, but we asked questions close to those, asked, retained what the support was. This last time, we've asked dangerous dogs.
Grocery store sale.
Sale of alcohol at retail, at grocery stores, and what was the third one, if you remember?
Well, the recycling was the other one, too.
We've asked that, and, and it's part of what you base your policy on. That, that's, to me, invaluable.
I think just a real interesting note is, when we asked the Sunday alcohol sales question two years ago, the results that we got were exactly aligned with the end result in the voting, was sixty-nine percent.
And, and it's, some of it's counterintuitive to what you may think when you look at it. You think, well, I know the community, and this is what the number ought to be, and you get the number back, and sometimes it surprises at least many.
One last question on that is, I was sort of cutting up over here with Keith, because I've never seen.
Windows.
I've never seen one of these surveys, so I'm just wondering, where are they? Who's taking them? How many people? All that stuff.
Thank you.
I mean, it, it didn't like fifteen people, is it? There's like-
No, no, no. Thank you for reminding me. I, I mentioned some of this stuff last time, but just as a reminder for those out there listening or watching who, who didn't hear last week, the survey is available on our website. Just on the main page, there's a link to it, so you can see all the results. We just felt that this was a good way to kind of roll them out and, you know, let the community know what they're saying to us, and that we're listening. So the survey is sent out to twelve-hundred people. I don't have the number right in front of me, but it's something like three-hundred. Yeah, it was about thirty percent response rate, which is, which is within the kind of average expected.
About like election.
Yeah, so it's, it's random. They send it out, again, to twelve-hundred households, and that's a person who's an adult with the most recent birthday to fill it out. So it's, it's a statistically significant, reliable, valid tool to use, so you can, you can feel pretty confident that the, the results are-
And I apologize if y'all went over that last time.
No, that's okay, actually.
No problem, that's a good point to make.
I did, I did want to remind people, if you weren't listening last time, all this information is up on our website, and we invite you to go check it out.
Is there a list of the cities in the survey, too?
Yep, the, in the back of the survey, it's got a list of all the cities that have used the survey across the country. I believe that there's approximately five-hundred in the national comparison that we compare ourselves to. The number in the southeast has slipped in my mind, but, but every single city that's done it is listed in there, and they use the most recent data from each city when they create the norms and all that stuff. So, good question. Thanks for reminding me to mention that.
Thank you again. Any other business that needs to come before council this evening? Motion to adjourn. Or adjourn. Get our room. Yeah, Bill.
I'm, I'm going with adjourn.